Right.
Lock the next eight seven two thousand twenty five public hearing and the minutes can be a boot of grit. Make that motion in a second. There it is. There's a bit. Okay, Ron, you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, Jimmy, about the water. The rural farm development, did you get a number on that?
What? I did not.
Um, I talked to Brian about the water coming out of his field into the town. Apparently he feels that that was rural farm development designed it, right?
They they possibly could have, yes.
So it really wasn't his problem. Well, he let me know that. I don't. So he was going down to put some rip wrap in a big hole, but. So that's what we and then. Mrs. Quicken Bush has been on my case for quite a while because the same problem she's got, her problem is is. The old drains out of the field there, Brian's field. It's old and. They're running right down there in her lot and then there's a tubby plugged up by the tree. So it's flooding her property everywhere. So I know she's been on me pretty heavy. She told me the other day it's happening worse now. Maybe we can. Do something with that. I don't know. What they'll do, I'd like to. Send somebody out and we can go through it. If the answer is changed, much water is coming out of Brian's field. I don't see why they. It's a major, gonna be a major job to. Tile that water back out. That's a big job. It's right down there where the bridge goes. We got problems with the bridge. And I'm supposed to be working on a plan on the bridge. I haven't heard nothing yet, but we'll see. See what happens. Uh. Comcast with Eric not being here, I guess, Ronnie, we can say.
I've got an update on it.
He's online.
Oh. Go right ahead.
All right, so Comcast has approved all the. Uh, changes that I requested. I'm okay with the changes they've requested. So it would be my suggestion that we make a motion to have Jerry entered into the um whole rental agreement. And then I can get that over to Jerry to sign over in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I'll say.
Okay, that's good. Eric, you know, when I talked to you, uh. Well, about three weeks ago about Comcast.
Yep.
And they said there wasn't anybody working here from Comcast. I was standing beside him. But that's no big deal.
Yeah. He called, like I talked to the guy and he immediately got on the message with. Like this Comcast person and they called like the contractor and they're like, no, we're not working. So I don't know what.
I I told the guys, what are you doing here, man? You're not working today. So it's no big deal.
Yeah.
If we got it all straight, so.
We do. Yep, we're good to go.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's a good thing. Uh, Steve, you said something about a time capsule.
Yes.
At the cemetery.
Yep.
So we probably better have approval to do that.
To bury the time capsule?
Well, yeah, so we we're the circle decides it's gonna be a time capsule. It's gonna be buried sometime later this year and talked to Mark. Mark has given the okay to put it in the cemetery and he said there will be a spot. Don't know exactly where, but over by the flagpole somewhere.
Yeah, there's empty spaces.
Yeah.
Yeah. By the flagpole, so.
I'll make a motion.
We need that.
Yeah. All right, I just wanted it.
Yeah.
To be done, so Eric, are you still there?
Yes.
Seventy nine fifty four Haven Street.
Okay.
I need the letter sent out. High grass, high weeds.
Seventy nine fifty four.
Yeah, the same one you did before.
All right, yeah, I'll look at it out.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, but that's not the really address.
No, this is the one I don't. Want to feel that.
Okay, what is this?
Vehicles, abandoned vehicles. You don't, we're out right here in the corner.
There.
Mm hmm. Test eating.
That's that's the one actually we have already turned over to the county and nothing's ever happened. Which is.
Same way with nuclear law too.
Please go.
He's holding off the door. Yeah. Oh, cause.
Do you want me to have him write them a letter?
Yeah, or talk to the county, I mean us.
I can go back and get into the county. Eric, are you still there?
Yes.
Seventy nine fifty four West County Road five hundred south. Which is Main Street in Coatesville.
Okay.
It's a abandoned bunch of cars, no new plates. Been turned over to the county before. Nothing's ever happened.
So do you want me to call them first or just send them a letter?
Whichever way you want to do it.
Not sure we can do much, but we can always try to send a letter to see if it motivates them.
That's just. That will work. At least they know we're still here.
I'll copy hundreds county on it as well.
Okay. Okay, uh, the big thing came up the last time is about an ordinance for the trash bins running. Yes. Have we done anything with that or is it just?
I don't know.
Well.
I sent it over to Eric.
And I forgot to finish it. I apologize.
All right.
Well. Got a lot of comments to make about it, but I'll just wait.
I will have it for the next meeting and I'll get it to you guys in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, that's all right. We'll let you go. How's the ballgame?
I think it's either two to one or one to one. So it's close.
You could better be watching.
That's why I keep looking up so I can watch the game.
Okay, Ronnie, do you want to? Since he's here, you want to talk about the gas station?
No, I guess. Jay's here.
Okay, well, I'll put in what I found about the gas station since he's here. I know we talked about you would pay. Three, four, five, six hundred dollars, right?
Yep.
That's dead. Um, I've talked to Mr. Gaston. And to take that little piece of property off of our property. And all the legal stuff that's gotta happen to it. They guesstimated be between three and five thousand dollars. So. I think we need to talk about. Going a different route.
Is fifteen.
Well.
You still have to have a survey.
You gotta have a survey. You gotta have a recording. It's all gotta be done. They guess from three to five thousand. Okay. Do we need to do that? That's my question.
What are you gonna use it for? Tell us again.
Basically, we need the rights to, as a gas tanker will pull up, like what's it? Pull up, just have the right way enters. But you guys say you guys, if anything happens on that side, you guys will be responsible liability. That's that's your concern, but my technically to use that property, both gotta give in.
Yeah.
And that's the.
Well. Okay, I think most of us here want is a gas station. We want to do it right. But. So I'm I'm gonna bring it up. Do we need to go with the the three to five thousand dollars or what do we do? I mean, that's.
I mean, from a liability perspective, obviously, it would be better to. Sell or essentially give give the property to them. With, and he just pays the cost, which my cost won't be very much at all. The survey is gonna be considerably more. But I mean, the town can do it that way. But I think from a liability side, that's what we want to do. Uh, is there a chance that, I mean, is that liability pretty minimal? Yes. But my job's to advise you on, you know, what's the risk?
Well, if we lease it to you.
I mean, if you lease it to him, I mean, so then the the property does get contaminated. I mean. In all likelihood, there's funds to clean it up, but. I mean, that's really the issue is if you want to own a piece of property that is potentially contaminating. It's pretty minimal, the risk, but I mean.
It's a tank. That's all the tiger going on there alone, there you go. Would he just kind of turn and back up?
Back up, use the property or Wednesday people park there.
Rip rip all their cars. I mean, it's not much, but still.
Right away. I mean, uh, David got them was on the meeting when he probably told me more about it than.
Yeah, he told me a lot about it.
Yeah, so.
I. Yeah, I understand it's minimal. It's not so. Three to five thousand dollars and all the red tape that's gonna go in it, it's gonna take a long time to get done.
Well, I mean, I think I think Dave could probably, I mean, I'm not gonna tell you Dave's timeframe, but I don't think it'll take an incredible amount of time. To get it surveyed off and. Then for us to get it noticed and do all that, it should be pretty minimal. If Dave can get to it, let's say in the next. Uh. You know, next thirty days, I don't think it's gonna take incredible amount of time. We just need to get a parcel and he knows how to do all that. And then. Or he could just, I mean, he could look at both properties and just put it on that one. I would guess he's probably just gonna parcel it off. And then we'll just quick claim that or deed that over.
He did agree with you. On the liability. So he do that. I just. Comment. Jimmy?
I'm honestly, I'm not worried about it. I wouldn't worry about it. I having a hard time with it. Just just so here loot using. Rich?
I don't have an issue with it. I think it's. For what's there, we're never gonna use it.
And if there is a spill, it's on him and the tanker company. I mean, they'll have to take care of it.
I mean, that guy's there pumping.
He's just pumping.
Fuel out and hope blows out.
It's gonna be on him. It'll be on that damn thing. Yeah.
I mean, the only thing is the tanks will go under and it will be right next to it. If they're then. God forbid tanks leak, it will leak into.
But then it's a whole lot bigger issue than this.
Get that piece back.
Yes, but like I said, if you guys wanna lease it for a couple of months till David gets around it and then sell it off. And then we could work on the price. I'm willing to pay it if you guys don't wanna ever. Because anything I do on that property, I will still have to come to you guys kind of agreement.
I would say, I would say from a legal perspective, I mean, if he's starting the process while we do a lease. With knowing then that. He's gonna buy it. There's probably pretty minimal liability then because by the time. I mean, the construction's not even gonna likely be done before we would have the legal done. So there's probably not a lot of liability. On that side, we could put some term that would say. That. I mean, I don't want to do that to the gas station, but something like we've got to get the. Survey done before and he has to own it before he can operate it as the gas station side maybe, but he can do the construction. I don't know. I mean, that's still, I don't think it's a big, if we're doing it that way, I think that's a pretty winnable. Approach for both sides that he can lease it for three months or whatever it is. And then have, then he's purchasing it after that.
Good. Okay. Where are we at? So far, where are you at with the gas station?
I mean, I've been waiting on the letter from you guys and the engineer waiting on me to get the letter. So we could submit our plans to the county. That's basically in the middle kind of thing.
I think we can get a letter out to him. Why not?
I could, I can draft some language in a letter that just says, County Coatesville is willing to lease on a short term basis while we are. Doing this and kind of lay out what we're doing, a survey and then. And comply and we'll all cite the statute that he can then be the purchaser under that type of thing. And that should probably work.
Okay, let's let's do it that way.
All right.
And everybody be that way, you won't hold him up. Okay, moving on. Okay, uh. Hammers are up going.
Yep.
Are they up and going on the trash bin?
Yep.
So if I dump something out on the ground.
It's gonna be here for us. Oh, they rearranged the trash bin so you can get a better.
But don't dump any on the ground because there's a. Dummies.
Dummy. Let you say is coming. It's not here yet. Till I rip it apart. But, okay. Okay, question, I'm back, I'm going with the cameras. How often do we? Look at the camera?
Daily.
Daily, when we're on duty, we're always up in the vehicles and.
Okay.
And we're usually looking at them.
You you got a four way stop then. How often do you know if somebody runs it?
Well, we don't know how often somebody runs it.
That's my question. I ran it to test you.
Oh, yeah, it's actually, it's actually alert us that somebody ran the stop sign.
Then.
That didn't make you guilt right there.
I almost left your trash on the ground today and I put your name on it.
Steve Sheldon right on the block.
I actually started to do that and I thought there was an old lady down there and she might have, with the cans were both full. So I had to get rid of it somewhere else. But anyway. I think the only thing is. I think you remember when Jerry asked you who put the televisions in the can?
Right.
And we didn't know.
Right, because they did it at midnight.
So I mean, it was done at midnight, but. Why couldn't we tell who who did it?
Because it's dark back there. And they didn't go out, um, where we have, uh, one of the license plate readers.
Won't be dark back there a lot. I mean, I mean, if we're putting this much money into it and.
But you gotta remember, people coming in from the western going back out the west, they're never coming in view of the other cameras.
Yeah, but only wanting to come in view of the trash can camera.
But when they're facing the camera with the headlights beaming right at the cameras, you're not gonna be able to see much.
So basically. Somebody's come in from the west, got their vehicle parked and looks at headlights down on the camera. They're in good shape.
Well, it just depends. I mean.
No.
Yeah, it depends on where they cross the cameras.
It don't matter. Where they crossed them or not. You gotta see them do it, right? And if you see them do it and you see them driving down the street on another camera, they're not doing anything wrong. Right?
The cameras will show us if there's anything on the ground before they got there and if they pull away, there's something on the ground, they did it.
Yeah.
May not seem actively doing it, but there'll be something not there and then it'll be there when they pull away, so.
Cam, just know we got a lot of money invested in cameras. Off of our sixteen cameras in town. That's the only thing to worry about. You know, this. I don't expect anybody to be standing there at the police station all the time, but at the same time. Is it lit up back there? Yeah, there's a light.
Pretty good light.
Yeah, but. But what do you say if the headlights shine on the camera? That'll waste.
Was something we can do to. Well. Well, we never proposed a camera back there.
Right.
I mean, that was the board proposed the cameras, recycling them, so.
Just try to be proactive and and cameras are a prevention.
If if we have to connect.
And we never said it, we're not gonna get everybody a hundred percent of the time, but we're gonna get them.
Can the camera be moved?
Like, can it be moved?
For for a better angle or something on here. This, that, it's experimental back there anyway.
Well, you could, you could have them come out and mount a bridge. It's an extra cost, but they put it closer to the bend. They, it can if it's, if they do another bridge, yes.
When it was proposed, it was where they originally were sitting, which we found out is not actually the town property. So when they came out and moved them.
Yeah.
It really defeated. Our purpose to have the camera there.
It's up against the wall because they're not a good spot for a camera. Basically.
Because prior, when they were on the other place, of which I guess is Keavens. Uh, the way if we had them turned the way they are now. We would see them coming or going. You can see what they're, but now if they're on the south side. It's difficult to see what they're throwing in there.
Okay.
What about this? And I don't know how far we on, how far south building we come down there, but.
Right next to.
There's no room for.
Next to it, but. I was hoping. That we set the. Cameras to the dumpsters, not the dumpsters to the camp.
Right.
And I personally think it's gonna be a pain in the butt forever.
It shouldn't make it one way. If headlights won't be faced, it just needs tail.
I quit. Oh, well. I mean, it seemed like we're. Going through a lot of effort for a couple of dumpsters. Actually, dumpsters are there for the fire department to make money on. That's what they're there for. So, anyway. Anybody got any better solutions on it? I'd like to hear it, but. I really was gonna put some trash out today, but that dirty. Did run the four way stop.
Yeah, but. Cameras don't alert to somebody running stops.
Well, that's what I'm saying though. If you put the camera there. And somebody running it, I've watched several people run it since the cameras are there. And I'm saying, then what, what did we put the camera there for?
Well, I think I. I thought it'd be for, uh, if I had an accident there because of a moving violation, you couldn't.
There was an accident there, there they got it on camera.
You could have got that, yeah, I know, but moving violations, you can't do nothing, can you?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. I mean, a lot of states say, yeah, you can. I don't know what the, I don't know what it is in Indiana. We have to see, but.
Me, speeding, one of the things they're gonna do is that, uh.
You cannot use a camera for a moving violation.
Yeah, okay, there you go. I know some states you can, other states you can't.
I mean, Ronnie and us, I went too long ago when big truck getting flying through town right through, you know, you went through the cameras.
Light with the black trailer?
Hmm?
Was it light with the black trailer?
Yeah, I got your last.
I didn't stop the other day until I was already through it, all the crap.
Now, I've seen him run it several times, but we've gotten him while we do see him, but.
Yeah, I I'm not. I'm just saying, I expected more for how much money we put in system. A lot of money, pretty close to what, thirty thousand dollars or something like so. Yeah, maybe it's just me. It isn't what it is. Okay. I think we've got some other things going, um. We got power in Sunday to TK Builder's house on Sunday. It's all done. We just need them to call us and tell us to turn it on. I can do that. It's no big deal. But everything else pretty, went pretty good for the month for the power anyway. But the hardware store. Maybe a lot of folks working over there. Lot of them. They brought their last semi in and. They're still telling me they're gonna open in May. That's what they're telling me, so I'm not gonna fit it to you. Okay. We got the grant. For the mural on the build. And Ron, they're gonna do that.
We're supposed to start June ninth and have it done by June seventeenth.
Um. There's pictures of it right there. It's gonna be very bright, gonna have a lot of color to it. Uh, it's gonna be that whole building right there, that white building, the end of it. And it's gonna be done by the, the people are out of New York. The guy is the one that done the, the, uh. Carols in Greencastle.
Silo.
On the silos. So they're experienced people. And they're the one that come up with this plan. We did not. This is what they wanted to do. This is what they're gonna put on there.
You said June, they're gonna start in the new month. June ninth. And they're supposed to be getting, I guess I'll get ahold of you, Jimmy. Is everything good on your end with the building?
Well, I have to tell them to make sure.
Okay, yeah.
They're gonna power wash it first and then they're gonna, they're gonna bring their equipment in. Uh, then we'll store whatever they need stored down in the shop.
They submit by Henders County, uh, the arts, they'll maintain it.
Yep. So it won't be something.
And they should have it done by when?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, yeah.
So.
It maintain the pain.
Yes, they're gonna maintain.
They're gonna maintain it.
Bears they'll do.
I hope, yeah. But if anybody wants to see a picture of it, he's got a picture right there. You want to see it? It's bright. It will brighten up downtown Coatesville.
And it has a lot of trains on. Just. And it's free for the town, so.
That's a good thing. Anybody else want to?
Maybe copy of it or will it come out?
No. I gave you this copy if you want it.
I got this one.
You have this one.
You have a.
I'm sorry.
Have any of them. It's gonna be bright. I'll, I'll say that for us. I think we've got a couple of small ditches we're gonna start on. Hard Castle is one of them.
I seen, uh, Quinn was down here. Quinn was down here there the other day.
Yeah. Yeah. Ran into a lot of problems there. Number one, I did not realize there's a junkyard there. Right by the highway. It's full of concrete slabs, posts, wire. We'll get by it, we'll do something. But. I really have. There's tile coming in there, like three of them. I don't want damaging tile, but some of them are old, but there is water coming out of them. So. We just do the best we can. We're not gonna go all the way up and hook into the. Pipe because it's it's not gonna work out elevation line. But we'll make it look nice. Hard Castle, we're just gonna put some rock in there. Uh, that he's gonna do it.
That's crap.
When? Yep, that's it. We have an understanding on his fence. So that's not part of the deal. So it seems to be pretty in shape on there. So.
If he would take the fence down while we're doing it.
We're not even close to. So we're just gonna dump rocks in there because. I told him some things that. I don't wanna say right now about the fence, and he agreed with me. He's happy to get the rock. And Quinn's gonna do it. So. That'll be done. Anything else, Ronnie? We got, we got a couple of meetings this month in June. We got one, uh, Oakley's coming in. What's the twenty first?
Yeah. She said it would be before the uh, next town council meeting. Amy did.
Yeah, that's the one I asked Chris about.
So that'd be before the second?
She said before, but yeah.
The next meeting, next month, okay.
And he said. He could be here for it, he may just be a short time.
Yeah, yeah. It's better if I'm on night shift, but I'll do what I gotta do.
Amy sent out a survey today, and uh, Dave's got the card. And you can scan it, the QR code, but all it is, it wants to know if you have any problems. With your sewer. It's. It's not what we're, what our problems are, if anybody in town has a problem with their sewer. Uh, with our drains or anything like it, sewer backing up.
Yeah, it's.
Sanitary sewer.
Sanitary sewer, yes, yes. But uh, it's, our problem is, is influence, is when it rains, we get a lot of water in the uh, main line. That's what we need to fix. But.
Yeah, it's unbelievable, just as soon as it starts raining. The dial goes off the handle.
But that's what that, the survey's about there, Davey, what what is their uh, point?
Seeing a video with the card.
I've seen video.
Or these, we're trying to get a grant.
Really?
Town is trying to get a grant to enable Coachville Conservancy District. The Conservancy District cannot get one on their own. They have to have a lead agency, which town Coachville's gonna be. On this one.
To 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 uh, expand these storms, storm surge?
Yes, well, it's going to uh. Because we get, we're getting a lot of, lot of rain, when it rains real hard. It comes in through the main sewer lines. And floods and eventually it goes and floods out the plant, or it could, it hasn't yet, but it could. What we're trying to do, we're trying, we're gonna reline the pipes and the manholes, we'll fix that. Hopefully. Hopefully it does, but it's a. An over seven hundred thousand dollar project.
And we 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 have to do it because the state of Indiana. Uh, they've sent some really nice letters to us. Uh, tell us how bad we are. And it is bad. But if we didn't do anything. The state would come in and do it. And then the cost of that would go back to all of us. We don't, we don't want that, don't need it, but. I'm hoping. That when they do this, that we can find out really what the problem is, where it is, what it is. This relining is unique, Jimmy's seen it. I had a piece of it here, actually, the pipe is gonna be a pipe inside of it. They pull this thing through and use uh, hot air and water to make it open up, and then puts one new pipe all the way through. And they run a camera down it. And they bore out all the holes for the homeowner. It's, it's very slow. Takes probably six months or so to do to town of Coachville. So, and it's very expensive. But it's the only. The only way to fix it. Being down there and some of it's pretty deep. There's a lot of pressure on it, but. I think the problem is not that deep, I think the problem is shallow. Because it should not overflow that fast soon as it rains. But it does.
Well, Jerry, does this have anything to do with the, the couple of drains down here in the west end of town? I know there's an older one in what I would call easement between the road and the cot, and the sidewalk. Um, looks like it's built in or what have you, and then.
At Trump's old house.
And then at Trump's house, it looks like the street was built up, one of those style streets that drains.
Trump put a drain across there. To fill the old. Sister for the fire trucks. So that's.
At my yard?
Yes.
Well, is that where that goes, that that one there, that there goes over?
It goes there, and it goes down beside your property all the way to the back. It's probably plugged up everything.
Then there's one in front of Greg's old house, one he just sold. And those seconds. You know, plugged up or been shut off, I don't know.
They're uh, they don't work, they, that goes back to that old. Manhole back there, it goes to the sister, it's big. And in front of his house, it really is. It's a pretty good size. I don't even remember what year they were built. Long before my time.
So there's all this drainage, that's something that would take care of that part of it too?
No, no, no. The only really way to take that. Is you have to just dig them out. And. I don't know where the one that in front of his house, I'm pretty sure it's not filled up, because they filled some of them up. I don't even know how many is around town.
Oh, you know, when I was first joined the fire department, we went around and things got down in there and things settled out.
Part of something the town does.
Used to, because they needed the water. But I don't even think there's a stand pipes there now.
Yeah, the stand pipes are, I don't know where that was going or not.
The stand pipe is?
He asked me one day, wanted to dig it up, I said, I don't know, we moved it on.
I don't know of two systems anymore, is there some way that you can uh, utilize them to help catch?
Well, that's what they were for.
Are they still doing?
Well, once it fills up with water, it's gonna go on down.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then most of them filled up with sand.
How big are they doing?
Uh, maybe three hundred.
One of theirs is ours. Over war.
I said maybe, I haven't seen it in years.
You have the fire department climb down in there many years.
Now, is that the grant for the sewer, sanitary sewer, is that for the same one too?
Yeah, well.
Yeah, they they have a different system, we got, we we do have the best system. But uh. I hear all the stories, and they're all stories. About what it was put in. They're just stories, but. I think the guy did go bankrupt just putting it in, right?
That's it.
The sewers, when they put them in. Yeah, sanitary sewer.
Contractor did, yes.
That's, that's when Brian Stevenson got his start.
Well, as far as the drainage series, so they want to utilize the drainage series and all that, or drainage water, I mean.
There is water.
Okay, so like runoff from yards, I mean, I granted, I understand we had a lot of rain here these last couple thorns, but. In twenty years, I've never seen Trump's old house, Greg's, or mine. Flooded out like it had been, and I.
You mean water, it really didn't flood out. It really didn't flood out, right?
If I was walking through water and him getting the drives in Trump's old house, that'd be a bubble water out of his basement, I consider that flooded out, I'm concerned.
That, that's why we spent a lot of money putting storm sewers in.
Right.
And it takes money.
Right.
And if you don't have money.
Pump Trump's basement all the time, it wouldn't rain anyway.
Well, and that's the one across from him. It looks like the street has been filled up to it, and then you come to Greg's old house, there's one in there, and it's, they just block that pavement. This will be, it won't take no water.
Yeah, I know where it goes, goes down, Trump won't put them in. But. There's a tile goes back through there somewhere. God only knows what it is, where it is.
Well, does it go back to the railroad?
According to Wayne Kibbit, that's where we are, but. By then, when they built the house there. They probably destroyed it right then, I know they did. And so they're, they're nowhere land there. Probably out in the middle of his yard before it plugged up.
No, yeah, no, it's in the back, because of the suck hole back in the back of my yard.
There's a lot of tile in the back of your yard that was dug up.
There's a hole back.
I know quite a few of them. And they were deliberately dug up. And that's. So what happens when people build a house? They don't care. Okay, anything else, police department? Fire department?
Only thing I have is uh, three or four months, our call conservative to one forty five, the pretty pretty steady start of the year.
I know, my son said you did a good job putting water in his house.
Just doing what we do, right? Make make mess of everything.
It's uh, but if you hadn't have been there, it wouldn't have been a house there. And it is, that's, that's a great thing.
Have you ever found out the call center, dumpster fire?
I didn't, I know, we couldn't find anything that nice, and. I never heard anything on that number.
Terry just said. He got there in time before the tour.
Yeah, when the lady hits. Luckily, Amy was home and. A bit of house. A bit upset about the big dog. Anyway, anything else, Ronnie, anybody else?
One thing. Uh, Natural Resource Conservation Service at Danville. The number is three one seven.
You gotta write it down and give it to me, I can't remember.
Seven four five two five five, extension three. Susanna Hines is the. Main person there.
I'll call her tomorrow.
And a lot of times, I know when I've worked with them. If you're gonna run a tile ditch or something, they can look on the map and. Tell how the water's flowing, and they can dang near estimate the acres and how much. Water's gonna be. Flowing on a certain amount of rate.
I'll get with her, really.
And. Sometimes they chip in and help, sometimes they don't.
Incredible.
She might be able to afford you some other place too that have. Rural development.
I did have. Man, it worked for me, worked there at one time. He told me he could do whatever wanted in Coachville, but then that was why I took over, somebody didn't do anything with it. It went somewhere.
We'll call him up at the time you want him done.
He didn't work there anymore. But, yeah, we will. Got an appointment tomorrow morning, ten o'clock, uh, the ball diamond. The shingles are blowed off the roof. And so. Town's gonna have to put some shingles on the roof, you know. Meet a guy tomorrow, and I know his price is gonna be up, but I'll try to find somebody else. Easy job, but.
Is that something we need? Do we need that old filter comb?
No, it's the new one.
Oh, it's the new one.
Yeah.
The old one got metal.
I put metal on that.
We got insurance? We got insurance?
Block building's free.
No, it's uh. What to pay for, that's why I'm trying to find somebody to do it. They've got a guy, the guy was running around here the other day. Taking. Just putting papers on people's doors, and I caught him. He was a roper. So I made him give me a press on that. So that way I let him go around town, pass out.
You should, he's supposed to have a permit. He's supposed to have a permit.
Yes, he's supposed to have a permit.
Did you collect the fees?
There is no fee.
Why do you have to say that?
I agree.
I did, I did uh. Mess with the Baptist church. About going around signs.
We're doing that again at the end of the month, my permit's still good.
You do not have to have a permit. If you're telling cookies. That'd be a different thing.
Talking about the one right behind the backstop.
There's two of them, one behind the backstop, the plywood's gonna rot out, they'll put something on it.
We just go with metal roof and.
Too much. Metal costs three times more than shingles.
Lasts probably three times longer.
Jimmy.
Do they use that building?
They store stuff.
They store some stuff in there, but I don't know.
In the block building?
The little.
Right behind the backstop. Was that the one you're talking about?
The big one.
You're talking about the big one?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Perhaps it'll be fifty fifty.
You know, for summary, just one side blew all.
Oh, it's not the block building.
You're talking about the concession stand.
Yeah, it's just seventy mile an hour winds. Got the block building, and we've got the the shelter house. Anything else, not ours.
No, the concession stand up there.
The the li- the one behind the.
The little block building, used to be the whole concession.
Behind the uh, backstop.
But if they build it on our property, then it's actually ours.
I don't care what you build, it's theirs, it's not ours necessarily.
Not necessarily.
Before my.
Well, I'd.
Something maybe I'll call Ball, they don't say call Ball societies.
That's theirs. We've got the concession stand and shelter.
Just a concession stand.
The little block building in the back, in the backstop, in the backstop. Diamond, yes, anything else is there.
It really needs a roof. The front one, that little building, the plywood's gone. Hope you can probably do that.
First thing in the morning, I'll get on.
Anything else?
One thing. The uh, new town website was launched May first. Coachville IN dot com. The other site's running in parallel with it for the next three months, it will be decommissioned on August first.
And where's the old one gone?
The old one will be going away August first, so they're gonna run in parallel for three months. We still need time to get all the archive minutes from one site over to the other one, that's the only thing that hasn't been completed, otherwise, everything that's out there today. Is on the new one.
Far back to our minutes, given.
Well, we gotta do more, but right now, online goes back to nineteen thirty nine. But we wanna get all the other historical stuff out there, goes back to the turn of centuries.
Little bit before my time, but not much.
I really find back, back when, anybody named, I was arguing about with, I've owned a rock here or there.
I, I've got all the documentation of that. I've got documentation where the town fathers sent letter to Danville to thank them for putting rocks on the mud road out here. If you'd like to see it for a certain price, I'll get it for you next time.
Just wait for them to wait tonight.
I'll never be honest with you about me.
Well, it's still on the old website, but they're gradually moving over to the new one.
Okay, that.
There a reason why the trail is blocked, Toby?
Yes. It's not blocked, it's got a river tie in it. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, that's two telephone calls, probably.
Sure, should be. There's, there's not access there for that, that trail. Who put that there? Yeah, who put that there was Eva Trump. Decided to put her golf cart in there, that's total why it's blocked off. And then, last winter, I had truck tires going back through there. Ain't gonna happen.
Okay, so, you know, some?
What?
Cause my grandkids use that a lot from the box. Can we not make it where it's an opening for them to at least get their bikes through there?
Listen, it's Henderson County Parks Department. Okay, I'm doing what they want, that's not an entrance or exit. It's our property, and I just assume do what they want. Why is it a big problem? A bicycle could still go through there.
No, you can't get a bicycle through there, no, sir, you can't.
Well, I'm, if you wanna get ahold of the Parks Department, find out if they wanna move a little spot for bicycle, that's fine with me. But I'm doing what they wanted me to do.
Okay, I mean, it's no different than like they have at their end, you know, they have a couple posts, so motor vehicle can't get through there. And, and, and for being for getting there, I understand that.
Well, let them put the post up, but don't blame the town for it.
I didn't blame you at all, Terry.
You're the one, wanna know why we put the poles there.
No, I do not. Me, I asked why we get them back here. For my grandkids' bikes. Well, there's three, there's three families that go back there and get on the show.
Tell the Parks Department that. Why are you in here telling?
Bike around the end of the pole.
No, can't, no, grandkids can't. No, you can't get the bikes nerd off. But I will talk about that to the Parks Department.
Yes.
Okay.
Hmm, because I, it's not fine.
Town has a phone, texting people every so often, like the, uh, Rachel, Bingo, and I, and, uh, whatever.
The emails, emails, right?
Well, I got a phone call.
Oh, yeah, phone call.
So, yes, a phone, uh, and I got my phone call a few days ago. Lady, uh, said that, uh, dolls, uh, dry service is if you have, uh, weeds or limbs or.
Yes.
Flipping, say, would have to be in a bag or a cardboard box.
Yeah.
Is any, anyone here been in contact with them?
They, they contacted town, yes, town hall, yes. I put, I put the order back, yes.
Did anyone talk to dolls? I'm wondering, what is the difference between all the limbs, grass, clippings, and weeds in a plastic, um, container?
Well.
And, uh, or, um, a cardboard box, what's the difference?
If, if you put a, uh, all your limbs and right down here a pot. It's easier for them to grab the box, throw it in, grab a, grab a bag, throw it in, but if you start pulling them limbs, that, that's what they're trying to get away from.
I had, I had mine in the, uh, black plastic thing about so hot.
Yeah. Yeah, but that's what they're getting at, Dave. They don't wanna, uh, they'll do a bag, they'll do a box, they don't wanna pick them up, uh, out on the ground by themselves. Yeah, black plastic. Yeah, what's, what's the difference? Well, they would probably prefer in a container that you don't want, that they can just throw in. Get rid of. And get rid of box and all. Cause when they go throwing them limbs in there, that's taking a question.
Yeah. Dunking limbs and, uh, uh, yard waste and sucker placement.
No, 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 they, it all goes to dump.
They don't, they don't wanna do with plastic material, one thing.
And they, no, not here, no. I would say not, no. You two, you two raised, didn't even want that.
Raised well.
But you had a dumpster.
Now, is that gonna be every week, or is that just like a limited time?
You've got.
That's every week.
That'd be every week, you've got, you've got so much trash you can put in.
Right. I think it's three or two. Somebody told me three, I don't.
Two dumps, two, uh, mighty gallon torchers, that'd be a hundred eighty gallons. You put a hundred eighty, you put a hundred, you put two or three or a gallon out there, they're not gonna pick it up, they're gonna pick up so much and leave the rest for next week.
That brings something up.
Got some places in town here that people put trash out, and then they put trash out that's not trash for every week.
Yeah.
That continues to sit between the road and the cycle. What is the trick to us being able to, how do we take care of that?
Have, have the attorney send them a letter, keep, keep, give it out, get rid of it.
Yeah, that'd be the best way.
Yeah, I've seen beds and everything.
I know the one you're talking about.
And, you know, if you put it out there and they don't take it, that's fine.
You said that for actually.
Dogs would wanna call dolls and pay dolls to.
Exactly, exactly.
It just, you know, you've run into that before.
I went up to the toxoid day thi- this weekend there in Danville. They took almost everything I had. The thing they didn't take was a bag of semen at Barton, because they can't get rid of, you know, semen's not a trash item.
Yeah.
But, you know, I had some batteries, I had a tire, you know, I had some chemicals. They took almost everything I had. And they said that there'll be more during the course of summer.
Mm-hmm.
May not be in Danville, but it'll be somewhere in Henderson County.
They rotate Amber and Blake, yeah. I sure I took all pretty little guitars.
I know.
You got the sidewall though, they're gonna take them.
He's supposed to burn them.
Please.
They were tractor tires, done. And hard to catch sidewall I had.
They took them though, didn't they?
Yeah.
Said he would.
And they didn't see me.
All right.
Yoda?
I'm there.
Well.
Get the sidewall down, they collapse, I think.